It's 5:30. Um, we're going to have a hard stop at 6:30, if not before, hopefully before. And so I want to say hello to everybody. For those of you who weren't at the Strategic Planning Committee meeting on, I guess that was Tuesday, you missed a heck of a meeting. It was just great presentations, great discussion. Our trustees did a great job, our administration did a great job, and it was a lot of food for thought, and it's exciting, it couldn't be more exciting, I think. So this is a meeting conducted in the sunshine, and members of the university community and general public, and the general public are joining us via FIU's webcast. It's an informational meeting for those trustees who would like to be briefed, and there are no action items. Even though attendance is not required, we will be, and we will not be voting on any action item. I will ask the University General Counsel, Carlos Castillo, to call the role of trustees, as we'll help know who is here when I open the briefing to questions. Carlos?
Good afternoon. Chair Coulson?
Here.
Vice Chair Tovar?
Here.
Trustee Alvarez?
Here.
Trustee Armus? Trustee Board? Trustee Grant? Trustee Renek?
Here.
Trustee Lowell?
Here.
Trustee Prescott? Trustee Puig? Trustee Reinhold?
Yeah.
Trustee Sorenoff?
Here.
Trustee Valdez?
Present.
Are you all, sir?
Thank you. As I understand it, Carlos, we've had no request for public appearances to address the board?
That's correct, sir.
Great. So the purpose of this meeting, which we've been doing every, every week or two, is to give you an update on our repopulation plan, and, and I'm going to turn it over to the president and ask the president to begin his presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good afternoon, everyone. First, let me ask if you're to put your mute on, that way we'll avoid feedback, and that will help the quality of our transmission. Mr. Chair, I intend to present this afternoon the draft, what we call the draft, FIU 2021 Repopulation Plan. It's a document that we have been working on for, since really our last meeting, and I appreciate the feedback that I have received from almost every board member. So let me go through this, and then afterwards, if there are any questions, either I will answer, or our team is standing by to, to answer those, to answer those questions. First of all, our priority in this plan is to resume as much on-campus instruction as quickly as possible within a context of student, faculty, and staff safety and well-being. Our plan builds upon previous plans and discussions with the Board of Trustees and the Board of Governors. We're going to continue to receive guidance on matters of strategy and resource allocation from UR Board directly through our chair. But the plan also reflects our attention to guidelines and approaches from the Office of the Governor, of the Board of Governors, as you know, the local government, and the CDC. The safety, security, and minimal, minimized risk of exposure to the university community will remain a top priority within the context of finding a way to repopulate and to resume as much on-campus instruction as quickly as possible. Let me now turn to the repopulation for this year. Our top priority is student success, that hasn't varied, and we have taken intentional steps to ensure uninterrupted operations and continued focus on our core academic and research mission. I do want to point out, as you know, that even though we did move most of our classes to remote in, in, in early March, the, we, we kept all services available as much as possible, and in many ways, the university never really closed, although we did not have a lot of on-campus activity, at least during that, that first part. We are now in a process of, of initiating a gradual return of additional office and support staff effective on Monday. Our campuses are open, student services are available, either face-to-face or remotely. We expect that faculty are going to continue to meet student needs through the resumption of in-person office and advising hours, consistent with previous semesters. And we also want to note that our research enterprise, we had a good discussion of that the other day, there is a significant on-campus presence of students who are engaged in the research needed towards their degrees and consistent with their work responsibilities. Currently, at least 1,000 faculty, students, and laboratory personnel are working in our labs, and that includes probably at least 200 faculty members. For the spring semester, our priority will be to ensure high-quality campus, a high-quality campus-centric academic experience for each and every student. We're going to aim for a return to prior normal semester offerings, such as this past January, when over 60% of our courses were face-to-face. Some courses this, this spring will continue to be taught remotely, in accordance with conditions and standards as they are evolving. We're going to be mindful of health requirements in place to determine the exact number of students per class, and I'll talk about those health, if you will, requirements in just a moment. Spring semester registration, which we talked about briefly at the last such meeting, is going to begin on November the 3rd, 2020. Classes will start on January the 11th, 2021. We will expect a full repopulation of on-campus housing, although at this point, it is impossible to estimate what exactly, what exactly that is likely to be. We also expect to ensure optimal room utilization for as many on-class, on-campus classes as possible, utilizing local, federal, and state guidelines to ensure a safe return to our campus. We're going to make decisions that will maximize the on-campus presence of our students while maintaining a safe campus environment. We will continue to rely on Canvas for course content and assignments, and if abrupt changes are required, we'll be, in course delivery modalities, we will be, you know, ready to make those changes through Canvas. Canvas will facilitate a seamless and safe, and seamless transition. What about health on the campus? We've always emphasized the issue of personal responsibility, which is a key premise of our efforts to maintain a healthy campus environment. Testing, tracing, and disinfection protocols are going to help support and maintain the well-being of our campus. We're going to continue to mandate the use of face coverings on, on, we're going to continue to mandate the use of face coverings on our students, let me get these notes, and on our campus at, at all, at, at all times, with appropriate physical distancing and hygiene. We're going to review the optimal size for group activities and emphasize the priority of such activities being linked to student graduation and success. We're going to encourage that all members of the university community timely receive flu shots. That's happening now as we speak. I hope you've all gotten your flu shots. We're also going to redouble our efforts on mental health initiatives as the spring semester wears on, with special attention to ameliorating the, the issues related to isolation and family domestic issues, which are, we're seeing are becoming a problem for our, for our students. We will use constant communications and reminders, we're going to be sent to the university community with updates. On testing, which has, has been a subject of discussion as well, we're going to have the ability to provide rapid testing for members, we do have the ability now to provide rapid testing for members of our community as part of our efforts to maintain healthy and safe campus environments. Testing is available now at the FIU Student Clinic and our ambulatory clinic to anyone experiencing symptoms or based on known contact with a positive case. Testing is also available at the county site immediately adjacent to the university. We are now testing nearly 800 people a day. The number's actually doubled since last week, for reasons that we all are aware of. Rapid testing is available at our CLIA-approved clinic as of October the 7th of this, of this week. This testing is oriented initially to members of our FIU community who require repeated or, or rapid verification of their COVID-19 status. The current plan is for testing of 5% of the students in residences and 5% of the populations and researchers and students working in laboratories. This will prevent large transmission outbreaks on campus, and student athletes, as you know, are being tested more frequently. There are other points that I, that I would like to share with you. I do, I am proud of the fact that about 1,200 faculty members, over the course of the last four or five months, have received additional training in teaching using remote and online techniques. I think this speaks to the seriousness of our faculty in making sure that we can have the very best instructional experience for our students, regardless of the modality that we are using. Mr. Chair, I, you all have copies of the document, I just wanted to highlight key points there, happy to answer questions.
Thank you, Mr. President. So today, we're going to do, today's meeting a little bit different. We had the president make his, his presentation, and there's, you know, members of his administration on, online with us, that can answer questions that, that the president might want to defer to them at his discretion. So I'm going to turn to questions on the board, from the board, and I'll start, I'll just go down our, our attendance list, and I'll start with our, our vice chair. Roger, you got any questions?
Thank you, Chair Coulson. Mr. President, the first thing I'll tell you is I appreciate you sharing your plan with us, appreciate you listening to our comments, our concerns. I would just tell you that I'll continue to encourage you, your administration, the staff, the faculty, as we've talked about numerous times, we have a lot of square footage on that campus, and we see a lot of our community finding ways to get as, as back to normal as safely as possible. And I think what our students, the reason they register at FIU is for face-to-face learning, teaching, instruction, and, and also part of, being part of the FIU community. So the only, it's more of a comment than a question, is to continue to encourage you all to find a way to make things happen, to find a way to have some semblance of normalcy in a safe way, and we leave that up to you, but I, I do think there's value in what we do as far as face-to-face learning, instruction, and then the value in the FIU community versus the remote. I congratulate you all for getting through this period in the way we have, but again, you all know my concerns, and the more we can find a way to do this safely with what our mission is, let's try to do that. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Roger. Caesar, you got any questions?
Myself here. No, I don't have any question, but I just have a, a comment that what we're doing is difficult, it is uncertain. We, we are put these plans in the hands of our president as the chief executive officer of the organization, as we should, and the staff. And all I'd like to point out is that the uncertainty that exists, by definition, means that certain things are not going to work out the way we think that they're going to work out. And that we ought to be respectful that, obviously, there is not a right, you know, and wrong in a lot of these things, because we just don't know, and so we have to place our, our reliance on our chief executive officer, who has certainly served us well, and I just encourage him to try to do what is right, as he always does, and, and understand that, that I think we as a board understand that we don't expect perfection, what we perfect, expect is that things be done in the best way possible.
Yep, I think you're right. He's juggling a lot of, a lot of interests, and he's dealing with his Board of Trustees, he's dealing with the Board of Governors, he's dealing with the Governor's Office, this, a lot of things are going on in the background, like the K-12 is opening up. This is, this is as hard as it gets, I think, right now. So, so, and he's communicating with me on a daily basis. I want to assure you that I'm going to continue, I have no interest to take responsibility for all this. I'm going to share that responsibility with all of you all, as often as I can. So we're going to be, I will keep you at, as a board, informed on, on a regular basis, and when need be, we will take action, you know, whether that's to approve or disapprove something, but, but I, I agree with you. I think our, our president and his people are, is doing a remarkable job right now. Dr. Armus is not on. Leonard?
Hi, Chair Coulson, how are you?
I'm fine, sir. How are you?
I think, you know, the community is moving forward. Following the vice chair's comments, I agree, you know, K-12 is moving forward. We've all decided as a community that we are moving forward, that we're opening up, that we're sending our children to school, that we're going to restaurants, and I think that we need to follow in that footstep. I don't think that this is one case where we want to lead and be exemplary and innovative in that regard. I think that this is a case where we move with everybody else, shoulder to shoulder, and we do it incrementally, but not spott.
I agree. Good comment. Trustee Grant?
Yes, I'm in favor of all the comments that I've heard so far. The president and his team, they're using science, they're taking all the input from all, all from the Board of Governors, to governors, to trustees, and we always have the students' best interests at heart. And I also agree that face-to-face is, is, is just a tremendous value that we offer, and, and as long as we can do that in as safe as possible, I'm in agreement with everything that I've been said.
Thank you, Gerald. Ambassador?
Thank you, Chair Coulson. A couple of comments. First of all, I just want to commend our medical experts from FIU. I've seen, again, led by Dr. Roldan Dolan, several appearances recently on national media, and it's very gratifying to see that our experts are respected and called upon for their opinions and their experience and expertise, so congratulations. Dr. Roldan, if you would pass that on to, to the rest of the, of the, your team that had, had stepped up so frequently in these appearances, made us all look good. Secondly, I, just based on the experience I have, obviously, I work in a company, I'm on the board of a company, and we are dealing with these issues, weekly pulse surveys in both cases among the population. And I think it was very important, President Rosenberg, that you talked about safety and well-being, because there are, we think, measures that can be taken in both cases that would provide a high level of safety, but we have a lot of people, a lot of employees who are very concerned about, in particular, coming back to work and then causing transmission within the families, particularly to older family members. So a measured approach, moving in the right direction is, is obviously desirable, but the mental health aspects, aspects mentioned in this document, I think, are very important too, to know that the safety and well-being have to be tied together. I will say, we're not going to repopulate either company over the next at least month, based on the concerns that we're hearing from, from employees. And then I just, I do have a question, actually, under testing, Dr. Rosenberg, the current plan is for testing 5% of students, how often will those tests be administered?
If I can answer that, the 5% a week for the foreseeable future.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Ambassador. Trustee Lowell, Natasha, any questions?
So, um, thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I applaud and, and really am happy to see that we are going to be emphasizing mental health during this process. You know, I envision our students, you know, our working students, most of them are working students, going to the office, but their office is a computer. At that age and stage and level of their lives, they're in front of a computer working, and they're getting paid for it. Fortunately, they're supporting their families, but that's their interaction all day. So for them to be able to come face-to-face to a community is just so important, it's so important to them, to their families, to their mental health, and so I really appreciate that this is the trajectory, mostly because I think of that student, that all they're doing when they're actually working for a living is in front of a, a computer screen. So thank you, and if there's anything I can do to continue to support that trajectory, we're here to do it.
Great. Thank you, Natasha. Claudia, Madam Chair, you got any questions?
I have no questions. I, I would like to comment on what Trustee Alvarez said, and I, I think he said, it's difficult and it's hard what we're going to be going through, and I want to commend our president, because I've been dealing with a lot of mothers with kids in college, and it sounds like a bloody mess that's going on in FSU, and then up north, some, I very, Ivy League universities, the fraternities, the kids are running rampant with COVID. Some of them cannot come home because they don't want their parents or grandparents to get it, but they've given kind of up in some cases, it seems like it's running rampant with the students. The whole fraternity houses have the COVID, and it seems like they kind of throw their arms up and that's it. They're all dealing with it, the whole, I mean, 70% of the homes or fraternities or stuff are getting COVID, so I think it gives a perspective as to where we are. I think we've been extremely careful and cautious in every step of the way. So I do commend the medical team that we have, and I do commend our president and his whole team for the way that they're handling it so far. I think they're doing everything humanly possible, and all I do is urge you to continue to do so, because that's what I'm seeing around the different universities across the country, hearing, you know, feedback from all the different parents. That's the realistic picture of it.
Thank you, Claudia. Trustee Reinhold?
I have no questions, but I'd like to second also, what the Trustee Renek said earlier, I'm always proud when I, when I see our medical experts, Dr. Roldan, Dr. Hernandez Suarez, and I don't see Dr. Marty here, but Dr. Marty and Dr. Trapka on TV and on national TV in the evening, and I know that we're getting good, good advice, and the president is getting good advice from them to decide how we're going to proceed. Thank you.
Mark, Sornoff, Trustee Sornoff?
Well, thanks, Mr. Chair. First, I just want to echo the remarks of the vice chair, as well as Leonard, Board. As you know, we're not going to be the alpha of opening, but we certainly should be the beta. And I'd like to, everyone, to just consider the Garrison Report, which came out, I believe, about five days ago, and the Garrison Report, which is in the Wall Street Journal you could look at, suggests that there'll be 130 million deaths as a result of the shutdown. And if you just consider the number of deaths from COVID, that is, COVID pales in comparison to the deaths that will be, occur as a result of shutdowns. So I've always been an advocate that we should populate. I think we're about to have some of the least remarkable kids coming out of graduation for the next, probably 10 to 15 years, as a result of two years of shutdown. I think that should be considered going forward. Anybody that says they learn better online than they do in person is a person that probably doesn't really want to go to college to begin with.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mark. Trustee Valdez? You're on mute.
Hi, I want to thank all of the president, the president and all his hard, hard work with his leadership. I do want to, I don't really have a question, I just wanted to, you know, state my perspective, like, you know, coming into COVID, we, students were pretty complacent with their, their attitude, they just wanted to be safe, but as time progressed, I think that there's mixed reviews of what students want, and I was actually talking to the Mr. President about this earlier today. As a student, I'm receiving mixed reviews, so I don't really know what the accurate response is, and there has been a sort of shift in that mentality of whether or not students want to remain virtual, because they, they've never taken virtual classes, and they all of a sudden feel like they enjoy that more than in-person, but I still do think that the traditional form of education is preferred by a lot of students. But again, that mixed review has been very telling of, of the response that students are giving off.
Thank you. Mr. President, I, that's, that's our, the board questions. I'm, I'm watching all this very closely, you and I talk all the time, and I'm, you know, I worry about, you know, the camp is not looking more populated, and I, I share some of the concerns of, of the, you know, that you've heard from, from everybody, so, and I know you're doing the best you can, so you're working as hard as you possibly can. So I think we're in a good place right now, and I'm looking forward to watching the repopulation of your administration and staff, and seeing how that turns out, you know, and with the, with the goal of getting, trying to get back to normal in January, and I, and I'm very hopeful about that. My plan is not to have a, a meeting like this next week. We're going to have a, a short board meeting on October 28th, it should be on all of your all schedules, and just have the president do an update at that board meeting, since we're all going to be together in two weeks, and, and, and we'll do that then. And this is moving so quickly, you know, between what the BOG may be telling us and what the Governor's Office may be telling us, that, you know, you know, who knows? I may have to call another meeting next week, but hopefully not, and we can, but my plan is to keep all of you all informed on a regular basis. So, Mr. President, do you have any more, anything you want to say to all the comments? You're on mute.
Yes, and no, we, we've gotten really good feedback and comments from you, we're listening, we're learning to listen even better, and I'm confident that everybody here on the team and others who are not on your screen, we get it, and we're going to do our very best to have a, a, a return to normal for January, that's our goal, and in the areas where it may not be possible, we're going to make it clear to you as well, and we're going to give you the reasons why, and this team is really capable, really dedicated, I'm proud of how hard they've worked, day in and day out, since, really, late February, to try to get it for our students and for our community. And so it's a work in progress, and finally, what I would say to remind them of and remind you of, something that early on, I think I said to this board, that when this all started, is that the way this is working, whatever we said today, we weren't going to do tomorrow, we end up doing tomorrow, and that's to the spirit of your point, Mr. Chair, that fast-moving environment, and things are changing very rapidly. So we're, we appreciate your time and attention, we dearly do, and we've gotten some really good comments. We are going to have, you know, more data for you, we're putting it together, we're working on that, we know you're interested in data, and so are we, and, and we're putting it together as we speak, so maybe we'll have some better data for you in the end of the month.
Thank you. Well, as I learned Well, as I learned on Tuesday, change is slow until it's really, really fast. And so, and I used that twice today in other meetings. And I didn't give Leonard credit for the line in either meeting. So, all right. Thank you all for taking the time out today, and I'm, you know, looking forward to talking to you between now and our next board meeting in a couple of weeks. So, thank you all very much, and thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.